All right, good evening. We'll begin our meeting tonight in just a moment. Before I call the meeting to order, our city clerk, Debra Thomas, has an announcement to make regarding tonight's council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council Chamber is not open to the public. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N. 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, the regular meeting of the City Council for April 14, 2020 will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Council Chamber will not be open for the meeting. Some members of council will be participating remotely and will not be physically present in the council chamber. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing the following telephone number, and you will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. The telephone number, dial *67 to hide your home number or personal phone number, area Enter your meeting ID number, 135-501-140. Password, 023-849. The city wants you to know that you can also submit your comments via email to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. And the City of Grand Terrace thanks you in advance for taking all precautions to prevent spreading the COVID-19 virus.
Madam City Clerk, is the information that you just read posted on our website?
It is posted on the agenda on our website.
So if those that are listening can find that agenda, they can find this information written as well?
Yes, it's on the front page.
All right, thank you very much. So at this time, we will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council Meeting for April 14, 2020. Tonight, we will be closing in memory of a Grand Terrace resident. He grew up here, his family was very involved in the city as well. Pete Anagnostopoulos left us earlier this month, and so we will be thinking about him as we close our meeting tonight. If you would please, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen? Councilmember Hussey? Councilmember Robles? Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson? Mayor Magna Boe?
Present. I can see Councilmember Robles, I can see Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. I don't know if they can hear.
I'm here.
I'm not showing any audio for Councilmember Robles.
It's connecting to audio.
It's still showing connecting. If we could take just one moment so I can get our IT on the line.
We'll move on to our special presentations, of which we have none. Do we have any reordering additions or removal of items from the agenda?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are to be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Is there any request to remove an item from the consent calendar? All right, seeing no requests, I'll entertain a motion for the entire consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Motion for approval.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, and I will ask City Clerk to call the vote, please.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Boe?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Do we have any requests for public comment at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So I will close public comment and bring it to council for their communications. I'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Okay, can you hear me, Mayor?
I can.
Okay, thank you for confirming that. So the first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to offer my sincerest condolences and my biggest best get well wishes for all those who have been affected by the coronavirus. I'd like to thank everyone for doing their part to stay safe and strong in our community by staying home unless necessary. And I'd especially like to thank all the healthcare workers, the first responders, and our volunteers, like the Red Cross volunteers, and they came out and did a blood drive at our City Hall recently, and our CERT volunteers who stand ready to help, and of course, our COPs. With no official meetings to attend, the only thing that I've done since our last meeting is walk around town and greet anyone I can see. I've been doing that a lot more. I've seen quite a few folks are spending this time using it to do some spring cleaning and sprucing up around the place, and that looks great. I'd like to ask you to please remember our code enforcement folks and the heavy work they have, and to help them out by remembering to clean after ourselves and to make sure and follow those. The reason I say that is because yesterday while I was walking down Pico Street, I saw that there had been a couple of dozen old oil cans placed in the street gutter, covered over with an old bed sheet, and I'd just like to say, folks, don't do that, okay? Please don't do that. That oil gets in the gutter and it goes into our waterways, and we eventually end up drinking it. And we can pay serious penalties for those hazardous waste fibers leaking into our waterways. We have waste disposal locations around us and ways to do it, and if you need some help, please let us know. We'd a lot rather you ask us for help than to just hide it and let it leak into the gutter. So without saying anything else, I'd like to thank the mayor for her time, and I'd like to thank city staff for hanging in there with us, and all the residents out there, thank you also, and that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey. Councilmember Hussey, please unmute. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
All right, I'd like to hope everybody had a blessed Easter and was able to worship at home. I know a lot of religious services were online, and there's a lot of good ones out there. If they did get to spend time with their family, hopefully they had a blessed time. And I would too like to thank everybody who is still working, you know, maintaining the city and businesses and our supply line and for all our daily needs. And prayers go out for everybody who's sick or have loved ones that are sick, and God bless you, everybody's in my daily prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I serve on the, pardon?
Go ahead, you had started and it was muted, but you're, we can hear you now.
Okay, I serve on the League of Cities Revenue and Taxation, and we had an online meeting Thursday, April 2. It was a little bit difficult to hear everything, but the key points, of course, is the state is deferring sales tax revenues from businesses to try to help them, so that will impact cities because we do depend on sales tax, not as much as other cities. Some cities up to 38%, so that's going to be difficult. One of the issues that they believe might help is a wayfair decision about internet sales tax. Going back to the point of sale may help us. Of course, we depend on property taxes, so we'll surely, in our next meeting, staff is going to talk to us about the impacts of the COVID crisis on that. There's a lot going on, the state legislature is not in session, but apparently because of this crisis, the state depends on personal income tax, capital gains is a big part of that. So we'll be looking, actually Thursday, there's going to be a webinar on some of the state impacts, but already, the governor and the leadership has already said that there will be no new spending, everything is going to revert back to a baseline spending level, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Pro Tem, Doug Wilson?
Thank you. Just like to thank all the folks that have stayed home and all those who have voluntarily participated in the mask program, although it wasn't absolutely mandated for our area. Pretty much every place I've seen, folks are doing that and volunteering for it. I know my wife is in the process of making a lot of cloth masks, and I know we've got some sewing groups out there that regularly contribute to the welfare of the city, and I'm sure they're in the process of doing the same thing. This is a time when we can draw upon some of those hidden talents that we have and not only benefit ourselves, but benefit others. And again, I really appreciate the staff and their willingness to work with us and get some of these things worked out in relation to our ability to meet remote. And let's just keep on keeping on, as they used to say back in the nomenclature, keep on truckin' and looking for the light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So remotely, SBCTA and OmniTrans have been having their meetings, and the overarching discussion is the way to approach the projects that are already in progress, and the funding for those seem to be holding. SBCTA will be looking at their Measure I Street program allocations, and I believe that the cities have already started to receive notification as to what that looks like as far as perhaps not as much as projected Measure I revenue in the future. They are working to come up with a better model for what they think that that's going to look like, projection-wise, and how that might affect projects that we have out in the near future. However, we will be moving forward with the Mount Vernon Viaduct project, which is going to be a major project for this region, especially in the San Bernardino area. It's a major thoroughfare. OmniTrans is, they have changed the way that they are bringing their passengers on their buses, they are bringing them in from the rear doors, and that is to keep a distance from their drivers, to help keep their drivers safe. They have determined to not collect fares at this time, and they are, but in addition to that, because their ridership has decreased significantly with a lot of the stay-at-home orders, they have put out a number of information sources about their routes that they are either decreasing service on or that they have stopped altogether for this time. Some of them had to do with the ridership at the colleges that are no longer in session, and so some of those particular routes, they have decided to curtail for now, and they will continue to monitor the situation and come back with the routes and the ridership when the ridership starts to increase. I was on a conference call today with the Board of Supervisors Chair Kurt Hagman, and he talked about a number of things. One of them is they are doing their best to increase the number of tests that they will be having throughout the regions, and he knows that not all cities have had their chance to have something close by, although I know that there are some planned for us at Arrowhead Regional, which isn't too far off. There was a request for more information about those that are tested. You know, we get an indicator of how many test positive in our city, but we don't know how many from our city have actually been tested. And so they are doing what they can to work with the testing. They are also looking at being able to have some of the testing. I don't know if it's the actual machine that they use to test, but they are trying to bring online something that will increase the number of tests that they can do within an hour, and that will significantly help us to process tests and know who in the county is virus-free and who is in need of some quarantine. Those that go to the hospital because they exhibit symptoms, they are being tested through the hospitals, and those are the quicker tests. The tests that take the longest are the ones that are at the private labs that they are using for some of these drive-through tests. The Board Supervisor Chair talked on this particular conference call about an economic recovery plan, and so he is currently working on that with county staff. He will, they will take their cue from the governor's six points of bringing back our economy, and they will look at it with respect to what makes sense for our county. Of course, they will continue to look at the use of the six-foot social distancing, the washing of hands, wearing masks, taking temperatures of those that have come in. And the way that he was considering it is perhaps it will be that there will be some guidelines for businesses, and businesses can sign up to go through maybe an informational session. He's not too sure how that's going to look, but he knows that he doesn't want to bring back the economic abilities of our county too quickly and have people become ill, but at the same time, he also knows that we need to be open for business. So we look for more information on that, and the county is actually working with all the cities to provide housing for the homeless, especially for those that may be showing symptoms. We want to make sure that they are taken care of. And just a thank you to all those in the community that are showing goodwill towards others and checking in on their neighbors and making sure they have what they need, and keeping your distance at the stores, and actually making sure you give a nod and a wave when you are social distancing as you're walking in the neighborhood with your mask on. And that was all I have. So we'll move on to our new business. Since we have no public hearing, we have no unfinished business. Our first item of new business is an ordinance amending titles 4, 5, 6, 8, 10, 12, and 13 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to authorize the adoption of certain fees and deposits by resolution. And so for this, we will go to our Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
The staff report for you tonight is the amendment of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code. Next slide, please. This staff report supports goal number one of our 2030 Vision Statement, ensuring our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services provided. Next slide, please. So to provide, City Council, we'll just have a little bit of background, and as stated in our staff report, California state law establishes that City Council may institute reasonable fees for the processing of permits and regulatory activities, as long as the fees do not exceed the amount reasonably required to administer the processing of the permits and regulatory activities. So basically, our permits and our fees normally are supposed to be for cost recovery, whatever it costs us to process a certain permit or application. Next slide, please. The Grand Terrace Municipal Code set forth the fee amounts that the city may charge for the various permits, licenses, services for the city. So the code also requires that any revisions, updates have to be established by ordinance and only revised by ordinance. Next, next slide, please. And again, as mentioned, that these are the fees that do set forth our charges, well, we are proposing that certain titles in the code that set these fees be amended. Next slide, please. So what we've done is just give you an outline of the difference between an ordinance and a resolution. An ordinance designates law, and as you know, it is a longer process. We read the title, we get an adoption by the majority vote of council, there's first reading, a second reading after adoption, it takes effect on the 31st day following the adoption. Now, a resolution that is used to prove administrative actions, which we feel that the establishment of fees that are subject to change should be through resolution, and once City Council adopts it, it's actually effective immediately. And the reason why we're proposing this, if we move out all our fees out of ordinance into resolution, we will be submitting to council annually during the budget process for review so that we can explain each of the fees. At this time, if any of them need to change, they're actually done through ordinance one at a time. This way, council will have a comprehensive fee schedule that they will be reviewing. We will always provide what the current fees are, the adjustments, justification for those adjustments, and what the new fees would be. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned, I'm sorry, I went ahead of my slides. We are going to make recommendations based on actual costs incurred. We will be submitting this to City Council annually during the budget process, and a comprehensive fee schedule will be submitted for council's review during the annual process. Now, this particular staff report is not creating any new fees or setting any new fees. All we're recommending is to reduce and conduct the first reading by title only, the proposed ordinance amending these titles, which are pulling all the fees out, putting it into a resolution. If this is approved, staff will return for a second reading and adoption of the fees by resolution. Next slide, please. I just want to make a note that this was part of City Council's top priority projects list, and no fees are proposed to be revised or adjusted at this time. This is the end of my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Director Fortune, or Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there questions of staff at this time?
Assistant City Manager, this is Doug Wilson. So we called, it's a minute version of a fee resolution, whereas before it was protracted.
I didn't hear him clearly, I apologize.
Mayor Pro Tem, can you repeat your question, please?
I'm going to assume that this is a minute process rather than a protracted process as was before.
Correct.
Okay, so we're familiar with minute processes.
Would our city attorney like to explain the process?
Mr. City Attorney?
Sure. Can councilmembers online hear me? Okay with the mask? Okay. So effectively, this would not technically be a minute process, it would be a resolution process. So the resolution would be adopted effective immediately and at one reading versus the ordinance that we have in place. We would have first reading, second reading, and effective 30 days after. And depending on the fee, some fees require a longer waiting period, some 60 days, 30 days, 90 days, and so that would be tacked on in addition to the 30-day wait period for the ordinance. So what we're trying to do is shorten the time so that the council has more flexibility to enact fees more immediately. You may, the council may remember a few years ago, the state law changed with respect to massage parlors, and cities had to react immediately and establish regulations for those. And to do that, they adopted fees to incorporate, to be consistent with the new regulations. This would be an example of why you'd want to do it as a resolution versus an ordinance.
Mayor Pro Tem, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions of staff? Is there anybody in the public who wishes to address this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Motion for approval? I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilmember Allen. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
And before we do, I'll go ahead and read the title.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. City Attorney, will you please read the title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Amending Sections Entitles 4, 5, 6, 8, 10, 12, and 13 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to Authorize the City Council to Adopt Certain Fees and Deposits by Resolution." Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Magna Boe?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll move on to Item 6, which is the approval of an agreement with the County of San Bernardino for the implementation and operation of biometric identification systems, CAL ID, and DNA services for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2030. Assistant City Manager Fortune?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Again, before you is the law enforcement CAL ID staff report. Next slide, please. This supports our 2030 Vision Statement, ensuring fiscal viability through the review and monitoring of contractual agreements and expenditures, and maintaining public safety by ensuring adequate tools for law enforcement for them to provide efficient police services. Next slide, please. Since 2002, Grand Terrace has contracted with the Sheriff's Department for the participation in the California Department of Justice's automated system for retaining and identifying fingerprints. Next slide, please. Palm prints, iris enrollments, and DNA. And this system is technically known as the California Identification System, or CAL ID. When I did the research, this particular contract is done in 10-year increments. So this was approved by the City Council in 2010 for a 10-year increment. They do, we do have an annual charge, and I will go into that, but this is for the agreement itself. So the benefits of CAL ID, it provides us to search and verify criminal fingerprints, palm prints, photos submitted by the Sheriff's Department, it provides certified copies of fingerprints for use in civil, legal proceedings, and administrative hearings. Next slide, please. And provides expedited search of said fingerprints, photos, when needed, for criminal justice and other public safety purposes. So prior to them having this particular system, they would have, the Sheriff's Department would have to do everything themselves. They would have to get their own fingerprint expert, they would have to do the math- They would have to get their own fingerprint expert, they would have to do the matching, and they would have to rely on their own sole database. This provides them with everyone that submits for all of California. So it's a bigger database, it is faster for them to verify any prints or anything that they have, DNA, iris enrollments, palm prints. So the agreement will take effect on July 2020 and will be valid for 10 years through June 30. That should have been 2030. Our annual cost in fiscal year 2021 is $14,900 and change. Staff is requesting approval of the contract, and requesting that City Council authorize the city manager to execute the contract, and I would probably refer to our city attorney. I think authorizing the city manager might have to be an amendment to the recommendation. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions. City Council may have.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager, are there questions of staff at this time? Jeff Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Fortune, for the report. Will that cost go up each year? Ms. Fortune?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had to unmute. Councilmember Allen, yes, it does go up by a little bit, and the last time, I believe it was like 3%. So it goes up more like in conjunction with CPI, Consumer Price Index Rate.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. What was our cost up until the expiration of this particular contract?
Our annual cost last year, again, it was a little over $14,000, and I can go back and do a 10-year, so we can see that progression.
Okay, no, you think it just progressed the 3% or, okay.
Yes.
And then you already have this budgeted when you look at the budget?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Because it's been, yeah, the city has been participating with this almost since its inception in 2002.
Okay. Further questions of staff?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wilson?
This is Doug Wilson. Thank you. Have we seen any fruit from this participation?
I would have to refer to the city manager on that, because this is, now, what the fruit should be is how fast a potential suspect is apprehended, because this is what the database is. If we have any criminal activity, how fast, what the turnover is to apprehend a suspect or hunt, seek and find them, so to speak.
Would you like an answer from our sheriff lieutenant at this time?
That'd be good. I just want to, I'd like some measurable success.
Lieutenant?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. If I can clarify the contract amount as well, it's not based on a fixed percentage increase every year, it's actually based on a per capita fee of your population of the city, and it's, the figures are received from the Department of Finance every year. The fee is as a result of a dollar amount fixed per person who reside in the city. So the total contract amount can increase based on increases in residency within the city, or it could conversely go down if there's more population that leaves the city than comes in. So that number is flexible, but it could also go down depending on how many people are moving in and out of the city. As far as the answer about the fruits, I can give you some statistics from last year. We submitted 17 cases to DNA for examination on crimes that occurred here in the city. We also had an additional 25 cases where latent fingerprints were obtained and submitted for examination, resulting in a total of 87 cards. So I don't have an actual number as to how many identifications were made through those fingerprints, but I will tell you as the past commander of CAL ID that there is a large success rate with fingerprints that are submitted. Of course, it depends on the quality of the fingerprint that's obtained, but our folks are very well-trained in obtaining those fingerprints and submitting them, and we receive very fast results. And it's not just the state of California. Our system runs through the Department of Justice, and if there are no hits at the state level, then it will forward on to the FBI and touch their database as well. So we've got a rather large database for searching for fingerprints, and we have very, very good success with that.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate that answer. Any requests to speak from the public on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Bill Hesse?
I'd like to make a motion, approve the item.
Okay. Motion by, motion by Councilmember Hesse, second by Mayor Protam Wilson. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wilson?
Yay.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number seven is an update on the I-215 Barton Road Interchange Project. Public Works Director Alan French will be giving us this presentation.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam and City Council members, I'm here to provide an update on the progress of the Barton Road Interchange Project. Slide, please. This item supports the 2030 goal, number two, to maintain public safety by investing in critical improvements, and number three, to promote economic development, as well as number four, to promote successful partnerships. Slide, please. The project is the largest road project in the city, with the original construction contract awarded for 47, over $47 million. The total project cost is $106 million. The project is about 88% complete. Slide, please. The construction includes a realignment of Commerce Way to Barton, which completes a connection from the interchange to the properties along the west side of the city, along the freeway. Slide, please. The project is funded by state monies, approximately $85 million, and federal money, approximately $27 million. The project completion date is scheduled for June 10 this year. Some of the architectural features, such as the bridge fencing, lighting, and colors, and the city identifiers, were choices by the city and subject to their approval. Slide, please. Project includes a roundabout and is being completed at this time, with installation of the rock monuments, lighting, and landscaping. Slide, please. Signals were upgraded around the interchange, and a new signal is added at Grand Terrace Road. Slide, please. Pavement is scheduled to begin next week on the connector roads Barton and Commerce, and it will take a few weeks to be completed. Utility relocations have been completed and services have been restarted. Overhead lines were placed underground where possible. Slide, please. There is a maintenance agreement that still may need to be executed. I was checking with Caltrans earlier today, and they thought it was already included, but I didn't see the landscaping and the street lighting. Should that need to come back to council, I will have a separate line item. Slide, please. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, yes.
Thank you, Director French. Are there questions of staff at this time?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wilson?
Thank you. Director French, question about the paving, I know the, pretty much the limits of where they're supposed to pave, is there going to be further grinding completed to get a decent structure to the pavement before they go in there and put something over the top of it, or do we think we're going to get a paste job with rubberized material, and that's it?
Mayor Protam, the plan is to grind two inches off the top of the existing pavement to get down to some solid base pavement, and then put the two inches of rubber on top of that.
Now, what are they going to do with all the repairs, the open cuts and so on? Are they going to go back in there and hog those out and get those to a solid base, or else we'll end up with the same patchwork quilt that we're accustomed to?
Sure, I understand. So when the utilities went in, they should have, and with inspection, and I can clarify this with the contractor, but what the contractors do when they put in utilities, they bring up the subgrade up to the pavement section, full 80% to 90% compaction in the trenches, so that, you know, the pavement section on top of it will be solid. So when they come in and do those, the grinding off, that'll take the top layer of, which is really temporary pavement, off, and then we'll put the whole cap on, it would be a solid cap across the whole width of the road.
Well, just, my understanding is, is that in our trench detail, the repair of a trench, we require a 95% of optimum. So would there be the thought that before they put this paving down, that they will supply additional sales reports that confirm that we'll have 95% relative compaction, or whatever our trench detail shows, our trench standard? That, we're going to have to live with this pavement for a long time.
Sure, I understand. And at the time the trench was backfilled, is when the soils engineer would have been out there and doing the compaction tests at that time, which the contractor would be collecting. And when the project's completed, that should all be handed over to the city for our records.
And is there any kind of an agreement where anything that they have put in so far as paving, they have to guarantee for any kind of period of time? Because I know in the city, we make our contractors responsible for any repairs for a year after acceptance.
Once that contract, again, that's between SBCTA and the contractor, well, before they issue the notice of completion, we have to buy off on everything. And then, yes, there is a warranty period, but it isn't, you know, maximum, it would be a year, maybe less than that, that the contractor would case.
Hate to seem to be, hate to seem heartless, but, you know, we've had a lot of patchwork quilting in that area, and just because they did the compaction tests back three years ago, doesn't mean that that stuff hasn't had water saturation and a lot of heavy truck traffic that might make it pump and all kinds of things. It seemed to me that before anything goes down, they should give us some subgrade, some new subgrade tests.
Hmm, okay.
Or at least we should get, we should be entitled to whatever they receive. I mean, they're guaranteeing the work, and my understanding is it's city's policy, that anytime pavement's been put down, then it's, that person's then responsible for the maintenance of it. So I'm just, I don't want to go back in there and have a whole lot of paving that fails, you know, three years from now.
Sure, understand. Mayor Protam, this is Harold Duffy, City Manager, and Mr. French meets with Caltrans every week for a weekly meeting. He can take your concerns back and get you an answer if you'd like.
Thank you.
Further questions of staff? Okay, I have a couple. Mr. French, as part of this project, Commerce Way was put in that crosses, as it crosses Michigan, when is that scheduled to be completed?
This, as part of this last paving effort, that's the major push to complete the project. So when they're paving Barton, they'll also come and complete Commerce as it comes around the corner, and they are scheduled to grind Commerce to where it ends now, past the skating ring, and overlay that as well. The plans show that being ground and overlaid as well. So that'll all be part of this last push later this month to get completed. Did that answer the question?
Yes, and then there's an interesting set of traffic lights now, as relates to the bridge and the roundabout. What's the final configuration of that going to look like, and will they be synchronized?
The signals, they did add a set of signals at Grand Terrace Road and Barton, and that's all new, and they'll be interconnected with the signal, and you have a new signal at the northbound off and on ramps, that's a new signal, that they replaced, that was signalized before, but this is just a new signal. And then, of course, at Commerce, Vivienda, and Barton, that's another new signal. Those are connected to help the traffic flow through the area, to get it on and off the freeways in a smooth-flowing method. So...
And so will somebody come and pay attention to the traffic patterns and synchronize them accordingly?
Yes, you're absolutely right. They need to see the pattern on how it's flowing and make adjustments as needed. Caltrans will have the control of the northbound on and off ramp signal. The city will eventually take over the other two signals, but yes, we will definitely monitor those once it's finally opened and be able to make timing adjustments as needed, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then lastly, they removed a median that was in front of the mobile station. Will that be replaced?
It will not, Mayor. It will not be replaced, and I don't know, because the original plans showed it in there, but these latest ones didn't put it in. When I questioned about that, because I was under the impression it was going to go back in, the answer I got, excuse me, was that there were some negotiations when they were taking right away from that property owner, and they felt it was detrimental to have that in there. So it was negotiated that they wouldn't put that back in. And if you look at the traffic pattern, it was a small island, but it really was reduced in size, so I guess that, yeah, that was just eliminated.
Any further questions for staff? All right. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So this is a receive and file, so I will make a motion to receive and file. I heard a second, but I don't know who did that.
That was Mayor Protam Wilson.
Thank you. Will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wilson?
Yay.
Mayor Magna Bo? Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 8, which is COVID-19 Update and Impacts of Local Emergency. Mr. City Manager, Harold Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor, for the record. Harold Duffy, City Manager. So I want to put this slide up here first, because I want to make sure that the residents have an opportunity to call in or send an email, because we have law enforcement here tonight, we have the fire department and the sheriff's department, and they can answer any questions that the citizens might have by sending in an email to the address- that the citizens might have by sending in an email to the address below. So on March 18, 2020, the city manager issued a proclamation of a local emergency for ratification by the city council on March 24, 2020. And so what we've been doing since we had that proclamation, we've been working with our local experts, the county public health officer, the county of San Bernardino, county OES office, and we've had daily contact with our first responders, the county of San Bernardino Fire Department, county of San Bernardino Sheriff's Department, and Operation Area Emergency Operations Center. So what's been happening since we declared the emergency? It allowed the city staff to post relevant information on social media to keep council and the public informed, like the number of cases that have occurred in the city or throughout the actual county. And then we also have been promoting the county's public health dashboard, where you can get relevant information by general area and also national information. So what's happening with the city operations? So city hall doors have been closed, but we are still open for business, and we still are processing permits and issuing licenses and things of that particular nature. Our parks remain closed, our county libraries closed, and we've been receiving enhanced law enforcement services because the county courthouses have been closed. And so what the county has done is they've taken sheriff officers that were assigned to those areas, and they've reassigned them to the city, to the city of San Bernardino, I mean, to San Bernardino and other places, but also to the city of Grand Terrace. And so you've seen a number of cases now where you'll see more law enforcement. And one of the unique things about what law enforcement's doing now is that they have checkpoints that they check out throughout the day. So you'll see them on a regular basis, especially on our commercial corridor. You'll see them in front of Stater Brothers, Walgreens Grocery Outlet, and they have these points and times that they're checking out, making sure that everything's okay. We've also been helping our most vulnerable populations, working with the local churches at food banks to help feed the seniors, and working with the school district to publicize their breakfast and lunch program at the high school. Okay, so here's what's happening so far with us with the COVID-19 cases. So, you know, we started April 1st, we had one case, then on April the 7th, we had a second case. Then April 3rd, we had a third case, and then April 5th, we had two more cases. Then April 10th, we had two more cases. And April 13th, as yesterday, we've had a total of nine cases in the city of Grand Terrace. Now.
And now we have ten.
And now we have ten, okay. I haven't looked at this today to get that information off of the site. So a lot of questions are asked about what does this really mean? And one of the things that the mayor mentioned earlier is about trying to increase the number of tests. And I keep trying to get that information, and when that information's available, we'll have that. We'll post it on our website also. So you can take the number of tests and look at the number of positives and determine if it really is relevant, information having only nine in a population of fourteen thousand people. So at the, once again, at the end of this presentation, we have an opportunity for the public and the council to ask the first responders questions. And I wanna reiterate that again, because there's lots of things that, you know, that we hear, and there's a lot of information out there in terms of what's happening on email. I get probably a hundred a day about different methods and resources. And so, you know, when to wear the mask, when not to wear the mask, can I walk? Can I hold my spouse's hand as I walk? Am I to maintain six feet of social distance away? You know, so there's a lot of information that we wanna go to the county's public health side to really get consistent information, but also this is an opportunity to ask our first responders some questions about that today. So we have here for our first responders, we have Battalion Chief Steve Tracy, and I believe Jody Miller is also here for the PIO from the, actually via Zoom, via telephone, they're here to answer any questions from them. So we'll get to them in just a minute at the end of the presentation. So our impacts to our staff, we've determined that the essential, that all of our employees are essential for the city to operate for essential services throughout the city of Grand Terrace. All employees are disaster relief employees and can be mobilized at any time, in addition to be determining to be essential employees. We have activated the Citizens Emergency Response Team, that's our CERT. We are also utilizing AM 1640 radio and Channel 3 and our internet and Facebook to provide information to the public. The impacts to our budget. So as council's aware, is that over the years, we've taken great pride in trying to build a sustainable budget. And a sustainable budget is when you have your revenues and they exceed your expenses, and you have at least two months' worth of reserve available in case something like this happens. We have a rainy day fund. And so I wanted to give the council sort of a, kind of a brief look at where we are. So for the most part of the end of, the start of our fiscal year, 2019, 2020, from July 1st to December, we really had a normal year. And then, so we were at a point in December 31st, 2019, we had revenues, we were at thirty percent of our revenues, and that's right where we were consistently with the previous years. And then we had an expense around forty-five percent. Now, the reason why our revenues don't equal fifty-fifty is because sometimes they come in big bunches, like our franchise fees, will get toward the end of the year about $500,000. It's not parceled out throughout the year. So we went back and we looked at what happened in 2019, 2018, 2017, and determined that this is right around the area where we would be. But our problem is, if we assume that there'll be no change in our revenue projections from January 1 to June 30, if we don't take some action to look at what's happening, we're gonna have a significant issue because of COVID-19. So as I said, January, January through June, revenues will be impacted by economic shutdown from COVID-19. Staff will make appropriate actions to reduce expenditures, and the staff will return to the council on April 24 with options to fill any funding shortfalls that we have. So once again, I'm just gonna promote, this is the, on our webpage, if you can click on the front page, click this symbol, it'll take you to all of the information that we have linked to county public health and various other agencies, including if you're a business, for the SBA, for small business information, for loans that are available. And it's very important that businesses understand that there are options and the ability to help. And one of the things that's extremely important is that if they get online and they can get an SBA loan, they have the ability to rehire employees. And so, for example, if they rehire their employees for eight to 10 weeks, if they use that SBA loan for that purpose, that loan actually becomes a grant, that portion, so they don't have to pay it back. So it's really important, especially when we restart the economy, that the small businesses know that they have that revenue, that option to gain some revenue. This is just the list of the different information that's on county public health's Center for Disease Control, information videos, and resources for vulnerable populations, and also the county's dashboard, which is dynamic information, which updates on a regular basis. So with that, I'm available for questions, and then after that, I will allow the public safety officers to come up and answer any questions that the council or the public may have, might have.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Are there questions for staff at this time? Mayor Protim? Did you have a question, Mayor Protim? You're muted, so I couldn't tell what you said.
No, I do not have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussey, did you have a question?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
No, I have no question. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Robles?
I can't see the presentation, but I don't have any questions.
All right. Any questions for our first responders? All right, see, no takers. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak or ask questions at this time?
No, madam mayor.
Bill Hussey, you're clapping, or are you raising your hand?
I'm trying to raise my hand here, but it looks like I'm clapping. I have a question for the first responder.
All right. Who would you like to ask a question of?
Whoever can answer.
Sheriff or fire?
I'll go with the sheriffs, as they say, of course.
Okay.
Question, I'm sure this is probably everybody's question, is wearing the face mask out in public, you know, it's at the stores and stuff, I've been to stores, and they're telling them they have to wear them inside, but when people are walking, you see people without face masks? Is this a mandatory thing to have the face mask when they're walking? Or if they're just around a group, or if they're just walking solo by themselves? How should we address that, or do we address it?
Well, my understanding is there had been some initial direction by the county of public health regarding the wearing of the masks at all times. And then I believe there was some additional communication where they might have eased off on that a little bit, such as when you're in your car by yourself or with a family member. And then should you come into contact with anybody at the window of the car, such as driving through a fast food restaurant, you know, you would have that mask that you would be able to pull up and cover. You know, I believe in terms of it being mandatory, the desire of public health, is that anybody outside in public where they would come into contact with people, it would certainly be recommended that they're all wearing masks. If you're with a family member and you're really out in the middle of nowhere, where you're not gonna come into contact with a family member, that might be a safe environment. However, any time that you would be coming close to being in contact with somebody, again, having that mask would be what they would consider to be a mandatory thing to do. So that's how we perceive it, and the sheriff's department as well has made mandatory that all employees working on the facilities will wear their masks at all times unless they're in their office by themselves. And should they have direct contact with somebody, then they would have those masks to use. So we're following the guidance from public health as well.
Councilmember Hussey, if you would unmute, please, and re-ask your question.
That was just my concern, and the question was, because you see a lot more people out there walking and trying to get fresh air, and sometimes our streets are a little narrow, so just wanted to reinforce, you know, reinforce the public, you know, that please wear a mask if there's a big grouping on there. I just wanna get clarification. Have we had any issues with our stores with people not wearing masks? Any problems coming about?
Any problems with where? I didn't hear that.
At the grocery stores or anything, have we had any issues? Anger issues, or anybody, you know, non corresponding or anything, do you know of?
Not that I've heard in the city here. We do have, as was mentioned earlier, some additional patrols at the stores in the mornings and at peak times. I'm unaware of any particular instances of disturbances or problems within the stores. It appears as though everybody is following the rules. And, I mean, I have heard problems elsewhere, but not in the city of Grand Terrace. So I think people, for the most part, are doing their part and following the rules.
All right, well, thank you. I know it applies to Grand Terrace, our residents, and everybody comes here and shops. So thank you for your answers, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to ask the sheriff's department, if residents have concerns, you know, if they see a gathering of folks that seem to be, you know, flouting the guidance, could the sheriff offer any guidance that they can to what the resident should do if they have concerns? You know, if there was some sort of a gathering and anywhere that people were not protecting themselves or the public adequately, what should a resident do?
So there was some information that was published a week or so ago from public health with a link to a website, and I don't know if we have that. That information may be on the city's website, where residents, if they observe large gatherings out in public, they can make a report directly to the public health. And what those folks are doing, they're sort of vetting those types of complaints or reports and taking some action within their own department. Anything that they deem necessary to inform law enforcement about, they will contact us and actually create a call for service, where we would then send a deputy out to try to see what's happening. And I believe that is occurring. We did receive a number of locations throughout the entire county where people have made those reports, and we're now sending deputies out to investigate. The problem with that, of course, is that by the time we get there, that process is lengthy. And, yeah, the party, the party might be over by then. But my recommendation would be, you know, if there's a large gathering occurring somewhere in the city where, you know, nobody is really following the rules, and it appears as though they're just not going to take, you know, a stern look from somebody who may be passing by, to give us a call. We do have deputies that are nearby that are more than welcome to go out and make contact with those folks, and again, encourage them to follow the guidance by public health. And really, that's what our main objective is, is to get their compliance. We may have a better way of doing that, you know, when we arrive. So that would be my recommendation. And certainly, I would follow that up by saying it's not something that would rise to the level of a 911 call, so I don't wanna encourage that. But call the public line to the sheriff's department, let us know what's happening, and we'll certainly send somebody out to take a look.
Thank you for that. That's all, mayor. Thank you, sheriff.
Thank you. Further questions?
Yes, mayor, I do.
Bill Hussey?
This is for the fire department.
Go ahead, sir, this is Steve Tracy.
Steve, how you doing?
Great.
Question, you know, we have a senior center and all the Blue Mountain Villas, and we also have a rehab hospital. Have we, have you guys been experiencing any increased calls because of the COVID-19? Or is everybody safe in those centers?
There are several things occurring with the senior living centers and the extended care type convalescent homes. Mainly that focus is being handled by public health. We have not seen an uptick in any particular home. In fact, our call volume has dropped across the county thirty percent since this has really started and ramped up. What we are doing, what the incident management team is doing with that is we're monitoring through our infusion center. We get information daily from public health. And if there is any uptick in positive cases in any particular area within the county, especially the senior living centers, they'll contact us, and we'll make appropriate decisions as to response levels to those areas, along with working with our cooperators within the hospital system. But as of today, there's been a couple, not in Grand Terrace, but other parts of the county. So so far, Grand Terrace, we're looking great. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, that was my concern, and I'm sure everybody's concerned about our seniors, their living conditions and everything else in there. Have they had any increase in seniors or call volumes? Or do they need any additional resources or help that we could do? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, ma'am.
Jeff Allen?
Thank you, mayor. And this question, actually, mayor, is for you. So in your, earlier in the meeting, whenever you were talking about, when we were each getting comments, you spoke about the OmniTrans meeting, and it reminded me, and I wanted to ask, have the And it reminded me, and I wanted to ask, have the routes changed yet? Or is all that on hold? Is there still a pickup going on over at the senior center? And the old route, I think it's 325 or whatever the number is?
Our routes have not changed. The assessment that they were doing has not come back to the OmniTrans Board for final approval. So everything is as it was prior, except for there are some routes in San Bernardino and other parts of the county that they have either modified or they've stopped for the time being. And none of that, I did do a check of that, and none of those routes came through Grand Terrace. So right now, our routes are the same as they have been.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that. That's all.
Mr. Duffy had something he would like to add to that as well.
Not to that, Mayor. I just wanted to finish off by just asking the public to please be patient. When they call 911 now, they have a screening process. So what they try to do is they ask particular questions about COVID-19 so they can prepare our first responders to know what they're going into. Although first responders do have information pertaining to the different locations that might have someone who has that symptom, but just be patient. So dispatchers for fire and the Sheriff's Department, they do ask questions of that nature, trying to make sure that the first responders know what they're walking into. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this item is a receive and file, so I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hussey. If you would, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Councilmember Hus-, I'm sorry, Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilson?
Yay.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do not have any requests for future agenda items, but we do have a City Manager communication by Mr. Duffy.
Yes, Mayor, I'll make this brief. Just wanted to give a shout out to the community for joining and providing 22 pints of blood, that's equivalent to 66 lives being saved. We had targeted for 25 people. We had 29 actually show up and for the blood drive. So we really appreciate that. Red Cross is always very pleased coming to Grand Terrace because the citizens do such a great job in terms of volunteering. Also, this meeting actually happened earlier today. It was a COVID-19 teleconference town hall with Assemblyperson Reyes. And then there is that town hall meeting, COVID-19 Resources for Small Businesses, hosted by Congressman Pete Aguilar on Thursday, April 16, 2020, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And then, as always, be safe and be sure and wash your hands. Avoid touching eyes, mouth, and nose. Cover your nose and mouth and clean and disinfect surfaces and be safe. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. We have two items for closed session tonight. First one is a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The properties are 22317 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-01, and 22273 Barton Road, APN number 1167-231-02, and 22293 Barton Road, APN number 1167-311-01. City negotiators, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, negotiating parties, the Greens Group, and under negotiation price and terms of payment. The second item will be a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Adrian Arguera, City Attorney, Colin Tanner, Deputy City Attorney, employee organization, Teamsters Local 1932, unrepresented employees, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Clerk, Director of Public Works, Director of Planning and Development Services, Management Analyst, which include two positions, and an Assistant Planner. And so, for those of you that are not here when we come back, please remember that we will be closing tonight in memory of Pete Anagostopoulos. So keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers. And our next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 28, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office. And the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So at this time, we are in recess to close session. We'll reconvene to open session. Council met and closed session on two items. Conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Three properties discussed, 22317 Barton Road, APN 1167-321-01, 22273 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-02, 22293 Barton Road, APN 1167-311-01. City negotiators, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, negotiating parties, Greens Group, under negotiation price and terms of payment. There are no reportable actions, but direction was given to staff. Item number two is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, Colin Tanner, Deputy City Attorney, employee organization, Teamsters Local 1932, unrepresented employees, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Clerk, Director of Public Works, Director of Planning and Development Services, Management Analyst, of which there are two, and Assistant Planner. No reportable actions. So we will move to adjourn this meeting. Again, we are closing tonight in honor, in memory of Pete Anagostopoulos. Please remember him in your thoughts and prayers, as well as his family. Next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 28, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office. And the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you all for your attendance tonight. We are adjourned.